Okay, six thirty, so we'll call the meeting to order.
So, Bertrand?
Present.
About what?
Here.
Paul Anderson?
Here.
Sean Mayfield?
Here.
Colton Martin?
Here.
Curtis Vaughn?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, for its broad and comprehensive into its role with the routine adjustments involved.
All right, at this time, if we can go ahead and approve of the agenda, the additions to the agenda. Correction, this is.
A motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. All those in favor?
Aye.
The move? All right, we have time for public input at this time. Anybody here in the public that wants to come up and talk? Our lonely public over there. Thank you for being here, Chris. Uh, all right, go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. You guys have a chance to.
On the table, those. You may want to table them.
Yeah. I just, it just comes to the hall.
Yeah, four o'clock.
Four o'clock. Like that.
Motion tabled.
Second.
All right, let's throw the motion and a second to table the minutes until next meeting. Any public comment before we vote? All those in favor?
Uh, I think.
Make some moves. All right, move on to the reports. The financial report at this time. Oh, sorry, I skipped over the financial reporting. Just in time. Do you have it here for me to read?
Yes, I do, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, General Fund Million Fifty Seven, four one four zero one. Street Fund Three Seventeen, one twenty six seventy five. Uh, Police Act Nine Eighty Eight, eleven thousand five forty eight seventy six. Farmers Market, four thousand one seventy four ninety six. And HUD, our state park counts, three thousand seven seven eighty two. And deposit deposits, six fifty eight, five one seven.
Um, I have a question as to one of the payments that was made. There's a signature bank Arkansas Visa credit card payment for fourteen thousand dollars.
I don't have any information on that.
I just wasn't aware that we would be making the payment to a signature bank credit card. But that is listed on the.
Is that, is this, that's not part of this report?
I know that's on for that.
For me, it's come back to that.
It's on the list of the checks paid out and.
Oh, the whole new, uh. On the bank account?
Yes.
Okay, I would have to look at that because I, I don't, I don't recognize those.
Yeah, I'm just, you know.
But yeah, making the point, we'll take a look at.
Look at that because, you know. Yeah, credit card payments. You know, I understand that somebody needs to be reimbursed, but you reimburse them, you don't make their credit card payments work, I think. Which has happened like, you know, fifteen years ago, and that was a big deal with auditors back then.
I, I'm not, I'm not aware of that at all. So, so, what, what's when it happened?
It was on, it was listed as coming through the bank on the thirtieth of September. And then it was, uh, listed as being paid out by the city on the twenty sixth of September.
Okay, I expect to.
Signature Bank, Signature BK AR Visa CC Pay.
I'll take a look.
Was listed as line on fourteen thousand two hundred fifty six dollar in their report.
She, she says it's a combination of two different statements. Just two normal statements that were combined for one, uh, entire payment for two different months, I guess.
But I'm just trying to figure out, you know.
I mean, is it unusual to have a credit card payment?
That's our, that's our credit card, the city credit card. Yeah, it's what those are. They're good, they go through a signature bank. That's, that's all of our credit cards. So Chief Travis, myself, and Kashana have a, a credit card, and it's all on one account. You know, it's different numbers. No, that's the, that's our credit card. It's our signature.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, I didn't think of anything adding also like that.
But the large amount was because it was a combination of two different statements.
Big amount.
So you're okay with that?
Yes, I mean, it's a credit card that we have with the.
Right.
Yeah, they're three, three credit cards, but they all are one account.
Right, and since you brought it up on our audit deal, we are almost complete with our audit deal and.
Good.
Uh, we have, we have no outstanding issues, just a few comments, but no outstanding issues with any financial, um, this reporting or anything, um, that we have to, have to be concerned about with. So it's like we'll go past.
General Funds.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think they're gonna issue their final.
Yeah, we should be getting that in either.
All right, can I have a, a motion for approval of the financial report?
Someone?
In a second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial report. All those in favor?
Uh.
Move. Go on to our reports. Chief Travis is ready.
All right, for the month of September, we had a hundred and fifty nine calls for service. We had twenty-two total charges by criminal, two warrants, seventeen movie violations, one DWI, and seventy-four warrants citations. Uh, we, there is a correction on the report that I didn't catch. And that is there was three plus hours of Jake Break, Jake Break patrol. Um, there have been a few warnings written, but nobody's been cited yet. But I will just know that state police are actually DOT, has been highway patrol basically, has been contacted to ask for help with this, and they basically stated they do not have enough people to help. So, uh. That's basically where we're at with that. Unfortunately, with Jake Breaks, we have to see it. We can't just hear it and see a truck drive by. We gotta know that it's him. Any misdemeanor has to be seen in our reports. Just to end up on it. Any other questions? Um, we have had a few things going on. Jesse just went to a class basically about things not particularly criminal investigation. He came back with some pretty good information. Hopefully. He said it was a good class. Um, Nathan and I will be going to Lincoln, Nebraska later this month to a advanced car search. Clear desert snow. That's a really good class that'll help out a lot too with our interdiction stuff on streets. So. That's basically what we have going on right.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Travis. Moving on to the infrastructure maintenance report. So, September twenty twenty five, City Park, uh, installed monument stones in the building in South Entrance Mill Branch Park. Stained and painted fence on the South Entrance Mill Branch Park. Fixed sticking loose boards on the park fence. Started construction of sidewalks at the North Entrance Mill Branch, that's with NEC. On the roads, asphalt work on South Entrance of Mill Branch Park and the bridge on hail. Uh, clean culverts after the rain. Box blade grading of Sprint Park Lane, South Sharp, West Sharp, Nemo Lane. Moved gravel from Blue Springs Road and Wyman Road. Uh, cleaned up bridge and guardrails on Blue Springs, uh, road, replaced street sign, changed Nemo Lane to Salisbury. I think you guys have probably seen that now. And maintenance, cleaned up the rock pile at the community building. Uh, spread grass seed and grass at the community building. Uh, pressure washed City Hall parking lot, sealed, uh, sealed City Hall roof. In the process of sealing City Hall roof, they realized that the way they were doing it without a spray gun is not sealing it adequately when it rained. So we're getting, uh, one of our contractors that's done a lot of work for us to come back and spray that. So it's a seal coat to spray that to keep the roof from leaking. Uh, and then they did seal coat the City Hall parking lot. Uh, continued mowing and trimming City Park, City Hall, Community Building. Uh, future projects, uh, patched the edge of, uh, pavement on Wyman. Continue installing new street signs after all streets in Goshen. Move piles of brush in the park. Uh, seal and clean, uh, concrete and Oxford Bend Bridge and Blue Springs Road Bridge. Installed park boundary signs. Here's some of the pictures of the work.
Cleaning out the culvert, cracks me up because it looks like he's stuffing it in rather than taking it out.
Yep. Any questions? All right, move on to the, uh, Goshen Fire District report. So we've got a total of, uh, thirty-three counts for, uh, rescue of emergency medicals, uh, service. Uh, one for hazardous condition, uh, fourteen for good intent calls. And one for severe weather natural disaster, a total of fifty-two. Any questions? I, I do wanna make a statement that I think that there's a big misconception with the public that the Goshen Fire District is part of the city.
Yeah.
Meaning that they report and they fall under the city's jurisdiction.
That's always.
And they know. So I've had, I feel that a couple of, um, concerns in this community about Goshen Fire District that they just had questions or they wanted to make a complaint online. Okay, well. Where's, where's this incident?
Phone number.
So.
I'll call it city.
Yeah. I'll just explain to these people when they call. Um, any commission report, let up. All right. So for September. Let's look at, it's, uh. None in September, it's only in August. So we're seeing right now, total piece collected for the year, uh. Twelve hundred this year, which is down from last year. A lot of that has to do with the lack of water, so. Questions about it? All right. Building inspection report, J D.
During the month of September, did twenty-four field inspections. Uh, some of them were the four ways, whether the framing, electrical plumbing, or not the plumbing of the gas line and the heat duct. Um, three of them on this, uh, report are late entries. Uh, again, probably did forget, hit save my editor the first time. Um, along with that, I went to the conference at my magazine. Uh, eight hours of electrical recertification. Um, eight hours of heat duct. Eight hours of the ICC file inspection training. On last Thursday, I went, two hours of electrical vehicle charging station training. Uh, this Thursday, I'm going to eight hours of state plumbing inspector training and next two, dealing with eight hours of electrical.
Question, you're gonna be trained up?
Trained up.
Your brain will be cool.
And J D, this looks like construction is picking up. Is that your feeling too?
Yeah.
At least your call.
It's doing pretty good, um. JR Horton's out of lots. They were building pretty strong out there. I didn't know what was gonna happen there, but it's still, it's keeping, keeping up pretty good with what we're doing. Uh, smaller stuff, you have, uh, pool houses, detached gardens, pools. They, they build pools year round.
Yep.
I mean, I was, yeah, Elka Inspector for six years, I did one pool when I come to the ocean, they had to stick it in on the construction. So I had to get an educational pool real quick.
Thanks, David.
We'll keep that going. Here, lay off.
Thank you, J D. All right, move on to the, uh, Parks and Parks report. I don't know if you guys had the Parks and Rigs in your packet here.
Yeah.
It just got, Danielle finished it today. It may have not been in your.
I think it was in the original.
In the original packet, yeah. So I'll read it off, um, so update, um, and she's unable to be here because she had a, a work event that came up and Mike was out of town, so. Um, they did a volunteer, um, event called, uh, Keep Arkansas Beautiful Campaign. They had seven volunteers participate, and it was, uh, shortened a little bit because of the rain. But they did remove several old stumps at the North Park Entrance, collected five bags of trash along Highway Forty-five extending from the north entrance of the park. And the Arkansas Department of Transportation continues to make state progress on the ADA accessible trail and look forward to seeing, uh, the completed work. This golf course layout and native grass planting on the north side of the park been temporarily paused until construction is complete. Uh, they decided the last meeting that they didn't wanna try to get that up and going in the middle of the construction since it's gonna be right across that, uh, creek from there. Uh, the committee reviewed two submittals for the hay contract, and they recommended awarding a three-year agreement to J M B Farms. Uh, a letter outlining this recommendation was included in your meeting packet, which I think you guys have all seen. Uh, the Parks Committee also reviewed the current budget and discussed potential future projects based on community interests and priorities. Um, they're currently developing their annual park survey and plan to finalize the details at their November meeting. And then the Parks Committee will be participating in the upcoming Goshen trunk or treat event. And they look forward to answering any questions or assistance behalf of the park and handing out candy to the children. Any questions?
So the hay contract, does that start January?
Yeah, I think the original, um, resolution had a different start date, but we're doing January to January just to keep it on a fiscal year, so. All right, any other questions you guys have? Okay. And then I do know, because I was at the meeting, there was a whole bag of seeds that had been purchased earlier in the year. We gave those to Day Crown because she's, uh, the horticulturist that she's gonna be able to go through and see if there's those that we can plant this fall and then those that need to be saved for spring planting. So she's going through all of those to decide on when, where we're gonna plant those. She'll bring that, that to the next meeting as well. All right, that brings us to old business. So we'll do the ordinance establishing variance process. This is the third reading.
Make a motion to be. The ordinance number two four four. Uh. The third reading is time long.
Sorry.
So we have a motion and a second. Any public comment before we vote? All right, roll call vote.
Bertrand?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Sean Mayfield?
Yep.
Colton Martin?
Yes.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing a variance and appeal process for decisions regarding driveways, signs, outdoor lighting, subdivisions, and other city regulated features and for other purposes. You know, I'm, there was one section that was removed, I'm sitting here looking at my notes, but it. It was previously section three F, but I don't recall exactly what it was. Oh, we, oh, we took out the, uh.
Time on the table.
What did I have, the pillars of the same rule? Oh, we were clarifying. But here.
Oh, who can make that request?
It's brief aside, there was just some grammatical errors.
There's just, yeah, I was looking at the notes, there's only one grammatical, you asked if there was any subsanation to that.
The extra commas?
Yeah.
Yeah. Brought up grammatical errors.
Yeah, that was, that was only change.
That was.
We're motion comma. Motion, I forgot what comma.
Second. So we have, um, we have a motion to approve by Bertrand and the second by Colton Martin. Any public comment before we vote? At roll call vote?
Okay, Bertrand?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Sean Mayfield?
Yes.
Colton Martin?
Yes.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
There is an emergency clause in this one, I, I think. It's. Pretty important to get this to take effect as quickly, as quickly as possible in case anything comes before the city.
I'm gonna agree.
Here soon, so it's there if y'all want to vote on that. Action and vote for the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion to invoke the emergency clause by Bertrand and a second by John Allen Court. Any public comment before we vote? Roll call vote.
Bertrand?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Sean Mayfield?
Yes.
Colton Martin?
Yeah.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
All right, so. Next item, it's gonna be, uh, ordinance establishing regulation for solicitors, but third reading as well.
I'll read through this, just wanna make sure, we took out the piece about. It was the expiration of the no dock list is what was removed.
Yep. We just need to note, if any are turned to, will be at City Hall during the duties.
No, but we will make sure that it gets done. So. It will likely follow on the zoning official, but, yeah, but it'll be a shared, it'll be a shared, uh, effort between zoning official and our administrative assistant, but yes.
Do we need to? Because there's a lot of duties of blank.
Actually, yeah, I just didn't have that information.
Yeah, um. Do we need to?
I would say just duties of city administration.
Yeah, I mean, some generic or say duty.
City staff.
Yeah, city staff.
Designated by.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, it could be as vague as that. It's just.
Yeah.
Up to the mayor and staff to.
Make sure.
Implement this, yeah. Like a motion, read title only. What's that representation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read title only. Any public comment before we vote? All right, roll call vote.
Bertrand?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Sean Mayfield?
Yes.
Colton Martin?
Yeah.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing regulations for uninvited peddlers and solicitors in the city of Goshen, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any public comment before we vote? Roll call vote.
Bertrand?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Sean Mayfield?
Yeah.
Colton Martin?
Yeah.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
No emergency clause, so.
I thought it was.
Don't say three five.
I was looking for it. There's an emergency clause, so.
Section four. We getting lots of paddlers, chief?
No, right now. If it, it comes to the waves, it seems.
But if we have another hailstorm, we will.
Yeah.
It's fall, so they'll be walking around.
You might get the once for lights soon, so.
Motion, vote emergency clause.
All right, so we have a motion by Bertrand and a second by Colton Martin doing, and add the emergency clause. Any public comment before you vote? All right, roll call vote.
Bertrand?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Sean Mayfield?
Yeah.
Colton Martin?
Yeah.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
All right, so, so passed. All right, so next we'll move on to the resolution, uh, adopting a revised schedule of fees.
The ordinance repealing, have we read that?
Uh, we have not, so it needs to go first.
Yeah, and I mean, yes.
I think some number issues on the fee schedule as well.
I think that's one reason why we want Bertrand to be matured. And you know, everything is supposed to.
Right, yeah.
There are, yeah, but there are some number issues that's on the edition that went out to us today. And I also.
What number issues?
Well, the, on the B, um, schedule. Um. You have the. On the. Um, the building plan reviewed fee schedule. You have the. Um. Same one that came to us, hold on. Um, you have the multiplier as point zero zero one two five in the first line, but if you do the, but then the second line, it says example project value and it's multiplying at times point zero 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 six two five. So.
I'm, I'm trying to find where you're at.
The, oh, very top line there.
Right, those are examples.
Right, well, but the example is that.
Yeah, but anything over five hundred thousand is a different multiplier. So from zero to five hundred thousand, the multiplier is point zero zero one two five. And then anything over five hundred thousand is point zero 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 six two five.
Right, but the next line down says project value is over five hundred thousand or six hundred twenty-five dollars for the first five hundred thousand. Um, which. If you do zero. I guess.
I see what you're saying. It's like, it's dictating a, a fee for the first five hundred thousand.
Yes.
Remaining.
Because it says.
Over five hundred thousand.
Because it says project value five hundred thousand, but above that, it says if you go to five hundred thousand, so that's, it's two five hundred thousand, that five hundred thousand. Um, should be. Times the, you know, if you're over five hundred thousand dollars, so if the project, that number that's there beside that.
Oh, you're talking about that point zero zero three one two five example.
Point zero zero one two five down below it, right? So, but with this, it says that also. Um, you know, so. It, the way it reads here is that. It looks like you're saying that. You've got three hundred and twelve dollars for your first five hundred thousand dollars, because it says five hundred thousand times point zero zero six two five, but if you're doing five hundred thousand dollars or less, then it says zero, point zero zero one two five. Is the way it should be read there.
I think you have to strike this second example.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, and then just go down.
And then go down.
Doesn't have to be five hundred thousand and one.
But then that's six twenty-five.
Six twenty-five, it's not.
Different than the three twelve fifty, something.
Right. First five hundred thousand equals three twelve fifty, but no, it's not equals six hundred twenty-five for your first.
So one of those is correct.
Right, one of those is correct, but I don't know which one because it's conflicting there.
And what if your value is five hundred thousand?
But that's, it is a two five hundred thousand dollars. So if it's two five hundred thousand dollars, that should also include five hundred thousand. There we go to.
So.
Next.
So it should be.
Five hundred.
It should be six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the five hundred, up to five hundred thousand.
Right.
So the three hundred and twelve fifty, I think that's if you're going over five hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Then that'll be.
Five hundred thousand and one.
One, right.
But then down here needs to be corrected. Five hundred thousand equals should be six twenty-five right there.
It should be six twenty-five, that's correct.
I think we need to table this and bring it back.
So the other thing I just kinda wanted to also. Make mention of. Yeah, literally, I'm reaching for your system, um. You know, and this is kind of a question for everybody here, you know, whenever we, way back when, said, you know, buildings less than three, three thousand five hundred dollars in cost would be excluded from needing a permit. That was ten or fifteen years ago or something like that now. And we all know that building costs have gone way up. And so my question is, do we wanna kinda up that amount? So that people can, you know, build their little shed because those little sheds cost a lot more money now without having to go through all the permit.
Yes.
And then also, you know, we have on the, um, pole barn square footish stuff. We have, you know, that's a twenty by twenty foot pole barn, which is really just kinda not much of a pole barn size wise at all. Again, that's kinda following into, you know, do we up that number as well? Because it's four hundred square foot is. Cause it's four hundred square foot is, we're saying that you need permit for anything that's bigger than twenty by twenty essentially. It's four hundred square foot, so that's kinda what I'm wondering as far as whether we wanna up those numbers and out there on the books. And not being nitpicking everybody that wants to be able to shop or fit or whatever. It's not electrified, or, you know, again, just that kind of thing.
So, just for clarification, I can change whatever you guys want.
Yeah.
Um, the question I have is, do you still want them to come get a permit if they're excluded and not have to pay anything?
You know.
So that we can at least have a, a visual of what they're getting ready to build? Or is it that you, because that's kinda my concern is if we start saying, oh yeah, you don't have to come get a permit at all. Then we may have buildings going up that they think they're not, you know, over the square footage, or they may think that they've gotten within the setbacks, but they're not. Then we have a neighbor that complains, so I still think they need to get a permit, they may not have a cost associated with it.
Yeah.
So.
That's a, well, I mean, until now though, if it was less than three thousand five hundred dollars, and you know, again, we didn't have size tied to that, if it was just less than three thousand five hundred dollars. They wouldn't have to come get a permit, they want everybody that just goes and gets a, you know, drop off shed in your backyard.
I think they should, cause I mean, you could set that drop off shed five feet from your neighbor, their property line, and that could really, you know, upset the neighbor.
Right.
But then, you know.
Also got people that have.
They had never, they never knew that they didn't need to set it twenty feet away, so. And, you know, we're not gonna charge them if they come in, if it's, you know, if it's, and whatever number you guys deem is appropriate for that, whether it's. Six thousand, eight, I don't, whatever, I don't know what number you were thinking, Paula.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know, I would say looking forward even, you know, we probably set it at ten thousand.
From, like, ten thousand, to even to buy one of those, pretty bad.
Oh, I know, trust me, my little tiny wellhouse was not cheap either, so I, I totally, I understand, and I don't disagree, I'm just trying to figure out what number you guys wanna land on.
Yeah, I was thinking ten thousand dollars, maybe, you know, forty by forty. Structure, well, that'd be whatever. Or five thousand, I don't know. I don't know, five thousand.
Maybe ten thousand.
Ten thousand square feet or ten, ten thousand dollars.
Value ten thousand.
And are we saying that for just pole barns, are we saying that for pole barns and uninsulated structures?
Un.
Like you don't know what to wish. So every structure needs a permit.
Yes.
Less than ten thousand would require.
Doesn't require, yeah, a fee. So no fee, and you said, I mean, that's, do we wanna have anything to do with square footage tied to that?
You know, you can do, like, if you do it yourself. You know, again, that's another thing as to, are we going by the number that, you know, cause the other thing I was looking at here is that, you know. If you have an unheated, uninsulated structure. And we're using our hundred and seventy dollar per square foot multiplier, that's not a realistic number for a unheated, unhoused, or, and, you know, yeah, you can build the. Unheated, uninsulated structure for, well, less I would hope than a hundred and seventy dollars per square foot, so that doesn't seem like a fair multiplier.
This is not updated either, cause I took out not on a slab, so you could have it on a slab, because I don't feel like that's reasonable, say, you can't have an uninsulated. Structure, and it has to only be on gravel or dirt, that doesn't make any sense to me, so I had taken that out, this is not updated. I'm not sure how this one got in there for you guys, or how it got in the mind, but that's not the one that I sent back out to county, to city administrative staff, so. So I'll have to follow up with them and find out why this is.
So, yeah, so anyway, but, you know, that multiplier is kind of a, not really fair and just multiplier, I don't think, for a uninsulated. Unheated structure of hundred and seventy dollars that we're using for multiplier there.
Yeah, and I think we had, I think we had, had that, again, I think that was the last, yeah, it was supposed to be one seventy.
And then. The. Other thing with this too, is that it's not clear on the permit. If, you know, we have our plan review, so we do plan reviews for residential and commercial buildings. Um, do we, is the pole barn and the structure fees, is that both plan review and inspection? Permanent or permit for?
No, so you pay, you pay a plan review and then you pay a, a permit fee for the actual square footage of the building and the value of the building.
So you're actually paying a plan review on these small structures, and then you're also in addition to that paying for. The inspection fees, because it just says fees, it doesn't say whether that's a permit fee or whether that's planning fees, and if that's the case. Then we also need to consider a plan review fee. At a much lower rate for pole barns and unheated structures, because all you're doing is making sure that it's got a proper roof, walls. You know, you're not reviewing electrical plumbing, everything else that might go with.
Yeah.
All the four hundred square foot and the thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Minimum, I think that may be in the ICC sheet looked until adopted earlier, because every state I know, every city I know of, that's a men. I don't know.
So maybe we have to clarify with ICC code to make sure that.
So much that you already adopted ICC code earlier this year.
Yep.
I, I looked, I tried to look it up, but I couldn't find it, I wanted to be sure we're not.
Yeah.
Go on and guess what we adopted earlier this year, we might wanna clarify that before.
Yeah, I, I thought that thirty-five hundred was just the number that we decided back.
Every city I know of, that's four hundred square foot, thirty-five hundred, I, I agree with Russell that.
Yeah.
We at least need a site plan, so we know what's going on, and they're not gonna put it right over the gas line or, or something else. I don't know, we kinda, we kinda need some control over, I don't see the money involved in, in a fee or not, and, and I don't see, you know. We need to, we need some control over what's going on.
Or over easements. Or over easements.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, over easements or, or, you know, we have city master plan, make sure the street going, um, in the future or something like that, maybe.
So I could say if I get that clarification.
Yeah, I wrote down ICC code a little bit to find out, but even if it's an ICC issue, do we wanna have something different for? Buildings up to a certain value?
Ten thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars, like we talked.
Okay. I mean, there's, I mean, we may have to still write it in here as that limit of thirty-five hundred and four hundred square feet, but we may be able to put something else in there as far as. But, I mean, I, oh, yeah.
It's a deal with square footage. Just a fine.
Some other additional value that we don't charge, an additional fee for, is what you're saying, up to ten thousand is what you're asking, okay.
Because.
Well, let me look at ICC code and see what we can do to make this work for that, and then I can bring something back to you guys, and I may email it out way early so you guys can look at it.
Oh, another thing. Um, the solar permits on there. So, the, I mean, it, it says no inspections are done on this permit, but we are doing an electrical inspection, so it's kind of a contradictory statement there.
Does this include inspection fees?
It says.
This, it's a separate inspection fee.
Inspection fees are separate.
Sure.
Yeah, there are certain fees that are included in the building permit for inspections, but for this, it's a separate fee.
Solar not being electric.
It is. It's worded, the way it's worded is a solar permit, seventy-five dollars, no inspections are done on, on this permit, electrical is inspected though. So we probably just need to, this word that, where it doesn't sound like.
And then, I, for the inspection, when they, when they purchase the electrical.
So, a question, and I had this, I've looked at this three or four times, and do we want to have an inspection for solar? And, and I.
People for the electric.
Well, not just the electrical side, I'm talking about. You know, when people put up solar, cause now it's not just on your roof, a lot of times you're putting up big solar wings and panels and, um. I, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking, maybe we do need a site plan for it, or how it's gonna be installed before we say, oh yeah, go ahead, put it up.
We've only got one small solar farm across from your house, Russell, down that road.
Yep.
They, they did, they did it two different places.
Yep.
But I think they're about, probably seventy-five percent done with what they're gonna do at this point, they may do more.
But I could foresee that if you had like, you know, neighbors that just wanted to put in big solar panels and, you know, they shine into your house, that might be a problem, so. Um, do we want to, do we wanna have that as part of the, do we wanna add an inspection? Would, do we wanna have a site plan or a plan before we say, yeah, it's just gonna get approved?
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, so I'll change that as well. And I'll look to see what legally we're able to do with ICC code on that as well.
So. We started the conversations around the rate increase. Uh, to do. Voicing, as it stands today, in the example, outside of any impact fees, we're talking about thirty percent. I still feel like that's excessive.
So, I just wanna, I, I had pulled some data from what we have right now as far as current permits. So currently we have, and I've, I pulled five different contractors that have permits in the city, that their valuation came in less than what we can even value it. Themselves, they had a higher valuation than what we are able to value that property based on our current standard. And even with it being changed, so if the, so an example is, and, uh, we'll just go with, um, let's see. Uh, hug our enterprises, project number one, the contractor valuation of the permit was five hundred and forty-eight thousand. The current fee valuation was four hundred and thirty-five thousand, with the new proposed fee valuation, it would have been five-ten, still under what the contractor said. Another one, AM Custom Homes, um, the contractor valued it at seven hundred and forty-two thousand, the city could only value it six hundred and sixty-three eight hundred. And with the new proposal fee, it would have been eight nineteen four hundred, so a lot closer to what the valuation was. So, and you're familiar with AM Custom Homes, right?
Oh, absolutely.
That's your son?
That was, yeah.
So, so again, that's, so that's where I'm thinking that, are, where are we, you know, if we have contractors coming in saying, the value of this project is this. We can't even charge them that in the city because our fees are already lower than what they're valuing it themselves, then I, I think we are too low. So. That's the only point I wanna make with that. I, that's up to you guys, you guys are gonna decide on what you want the fees to be, but.
Again, comparing to other cities outside of Fayetteville. Outside of impact fees were still very much higher than the other community. Large and small, so. We need to do something with the valuation, but again, I think the multiplier at that point.
Well, it's based on the value of the homes in our city, so if, and we, we are the highest home value in the entire state, so if you look at how you actually calculate. From ICC standards, that's what we've adopted as our code for the city, that, that is what we're looking at for evaluation. That's where the number comes from, is all of the building that we've done, the value of those homes in, in the city, and then the cost of our staff to be able to provide that service, so.
I think they're too much of an increase, I'm, I would support thirty, twenty, four, nine percent increase.
No, I wouldn't either.
So what do y'all recommend?
Good question.
Two-fold, as property, as long as the calculation is based upon, we're still in an appreciating market. So as long as that continues on, but I think anywhere from the three or five percent increase versus a thirty percent increase. Or. If we wanna establish something, I think one thing that will take away from at least our community is the concern still for, you know, we talked about this before, roadways. Inside of subdivision, still being a hundred percent responsibility for those homeowners in there. So if we, if we're taking on, asking the community for more abundance, be it not only here, but for potential marriage increases. What are we doing to at least help offset that, to at least start something in the city, where we begin strictly, and you can call it. I don't think you can pull any of the two, obviously, between the current street and what I would call subdivision streets. So how do we begin to develop at least some fund to get, get things rolling and at least give the citizens. Something for what additional monies that we're asking for, other than primary services. Because I, I would dare say, from what I hear is, well, before we moved in the community, we had no idea that the city didn't take, take care of all, of whatever it's, it's. I would argue that's on the homeowner, from hearing about a subdivision, better read your bylaws and your covenants.
That's correct, and it is presented to you and you sign off that closely.
And I'm there, and we got five miles of road.
I totally understand.
Buck, correct me if I'm wrong, if the city gives any money to street repairs, that street now it has to become a city street, correct?
Hundred percent.
Then it becomes our playground.
Well, that's then, yes. It requires dedication to the city and the city has to accept it.
Yeah.
And then you get to enforce it.
And pay for the cost of doing it. Which we don't have a revenue for that.
That is right, I mean, you know, it's, and well, we're gonna go through the budget tonight, but I mean, one of the things that is very. Arduous is trying to figure out what are the highest priorities in just maintaining the infrastructure, and, you know. I wanted to resurface streets, but I started looking at all the culverts, because nobody had ever gone through the city and looked at all the culverts in the city and named them and numbered them and said. Where they are, and are they in good shape, or are they rotted out? Well, when you go and you look at a culvert, it's collapsed because it's rotted out, you gotta replace that before you can put a, a surface on a street. So, you know, that's what we're doing a lot of this year, it's not gonna take care of all of them, it's just what we have in our budget to be able to do it with. But with, you know, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually to, to fix roads in the city, in eleven square mile city, you can't do it. There's no, there's no fiscal way to maintain those adequately on that budget. And then if we're gonna take on. You know, additional roads in all of the gated and, and private subdivisions, I mean, I, I agree, I think that's something we should look to do, but. There's no way we're gonna be able to fiscally afford to, to adequately take care of those.
I think we're, and Sean, you said, I think we're complaining too, is on its valuation, the percentage increase, and on its more infrastructure, the city might take up. I think there's two different, related, but they're two separate line items, like.
True.
And if builders are evaluate, their valuation is higher than what we can collect now. So if we get to that, but I don't know that three to five percent is a right answer compared to others, maybe it's somewhat of them.
And that's the discussion we wanted to have with what would be an acceptable rate that we could look at, thirty for what we propose, thinking. That's what we would be able to do, what we need to do.
Well, we, we've looked at it based on ICC, that's the only reason we came up with that, so, I mean, we can look at something different, but we need some marker from you guys for us to say, okay, well, what, what percentage is that? And we can go back, put a different, you know. Numerator in there for our calculations to come up with a percentage of anywhere between, you know, whatever percent you guys decide. But we need to do something and have options for you guys to vote on, so you guys tell us what, what you want.
Well, no, I just meant my personal property taxes, they went up, again.
Yes, I know, I do.
It's not getting cheaper, and it may be thirty percent in the right number, but they called it, and Sean said they were against it, so what, we can take a period up?
No, I think they need to look at. And. This calculation worked out, but a couple of different incentives. Now, you look at it at five percent, ten percent, twenty percent, or. Seventeen percent.
Well, and there's also the question of, you know, if you're building a less expensive house, you're. Paying a higher percentage on that structure that you're constructing, is that truly something that's fair? Also, so, you know, do we look at maybe reducing that zero to five hundred thousand amount, but increasing on the people that are spending the million dollars on the house?
I think the examples that we used, uh, were in that, I don't know, specifically, it was on six hundred and forty-five thousand.
So, I don't know, that's, that's kind of a. Another perspective also is that. Right now, it's, again, we're.
But is that not the main? Main cost of a housing.
So it is.
Well, the, the. Well, the, the median house price in Goshen is seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand right now.
Basis on six forty-five?
Yeah.
Because I think that took in all of, I understand, so you have a whole house, or you got a garage, and then you got the, the.
I'm not, you can choose where you wanna live. Saying thirty percent is a right number, but I think it's starting with one thirty-five percent. And then it's a calculus, it's based on what that says, so. So what are you saying, ten, fifteen, and twenty?
I think that if you give us a permit on, on those three, and then we can make a decision on where we wanna go.
So ten, fifteen, and twenty percent?
No question, I'm not.
Is that what you wanna see calculated out? So you want a numerator that would be ten percent, a numerator that would be fifteen, and a numerator that would be twenty?
That the end calculations show.
Yeah, that's, that's the hard part, because we have to come up with a numerator that's gonna give us those.
That's fine, ten, fifteen, and twenty percent.
And then put those together and then send those out to you guys.
Because somebody's gonna build something that's not as expensive, they're gonna get, then.
Essentially, you're paying, you're paying a higher percentage when you're building a smaller structure. You know, that first, I would, I understand the point is that if you're already doing the work, you know, and adding a larger, or, again, you know, I understand that if you're building a structure that, you know, that's gonna cost a certain amount of time manpower-wise. That, you know, adding on additional feet, that it does cost less and less manpower-wise. You know, there is the economy to scale, but, you know, again, is it, is that fair?
Let me, let me, let me throw out a proposal then, if we're looking at different rates, instead of looking at the rate like the mayor pointed out, we're, our rate is committed anymore than what the contractors put in that. So whatever numerator we look at, let's at least make it what the contractors are valuing, and if we're coming below it, and use that percent.
If that's the case, it's gonna be more than thirty.
The one where we're below that.
But I think what we're saying, it doesn't matter in that case, because our, we're still driving a higher cost for that same component. So the comparison that we used was six forty-five.
No, I'm saying what the contractor actually has put their value in.
But what I'm saying is currently today, based on that six forty-five, even if we showed it seven, it, we're still generating more revenue with our calculation.
I'm not talking about basing it on the six forty-five, I'm talking about basing it on.
But, but I think what, and I think the issue that I see is that if you have a house that's valued at eight hundred thousand by the contractor, but the city can only value it at five seventy, because that's the calculation we choose to follow. If we're only doing a hundred and seventy per square foot, if they come to us and say, we value the house at, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars, but we can't, we have to value it at six hundred, then we're losing money. So we can either change that numerator, or we can change the dollar per square footage that we're charging. So it's one of the two, and it can't be both, I mean, you have to like make a decision. Do you wanna charge what actual contractors are giving you the value of, which is gonna be more than a hundred and seventy per square foot? Because that costs more to build now, or do we wanna use a different numerator? It's still gonna be more money. But what I'm saying is, if we have contractors coming in and they're saying, you know, we're building this new house, and we put a value of eight hundred thousand on it, but the city can't even get to that to even add the numerator to it, then we're still way far behind what we should be. Does that make sense?
I think that's your problem. Like, I fully support charging them for the correct amount.
But that's the question, we've chosen to choose one seventy as that dollar per square foot, which is an increase from where we've been. But like, it's still less than what it's actually costing to build most of the time. So we can either increase that number to more like what it is actually costing to build, or we can change that numerator of what we charge on that actual valuation of the, the project.
Yeah, I mean, I think you would wanna charge how much it actually costs to, cost to build, because of the costs are only gonna increase, you know? And that rate is meant to capture a third percentage.
I mean, I'm comfortable going back to our old numerator if we're gonna actually charge what we actually are costing to build.
I think the numerator is what you have.
That's where we, that's.
Right, so we do have to change the rate, or we lose money, if we, if we're not gonna do it out.
Go back to the old system.
No, they'll, we're using the same system, it's just that you have a dollar per square foot that you charge, and that cost has gone up. We did not bring it up at all in the city over the last, you know, three years. And so now we're at a point where the cost per square foot has gone up, but we're still charging a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. You can't build a house for a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So the contractors know that, they're coming in, they're saying, you know, this project is seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, and the city says, oh, well, we can't, we can't value it at that, because we're only charging a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, so your value is actually only gonna be, you know, I mean.
If you raise the numerator, it would increase the percentage.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Hold on, did you, did you say, the contractors are valuing that?
Well, I think you, yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever the valuation is of the house.
There has to be, there has to be a check and balance there.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm just, I'm just elaborating what he said, that's all I.
No, I understand, but what I'm trying to caution is that if I, if I undervalue, if, if I was a contractor and I came in and said, oh, my cost is, it's fifty, but really not.
But we have, we have our.
You gotta like sure that.
Yeah, we have our base to look at, we can season that out, but I'm just, wanna make sure that I heard that correctly, we, we put that out there, basically.
So do we wanna make a clause that says contractor valuation or the minimum valuation that the city enforces? So if the contractor says, this is not your typical home, it's a very custom home, it's gonna be two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, they value it at nine hundred thousand, and the city would have only valued it at seven hundred and eighty, then we're gonna charge the full nine hundred? Okay? Is that comfortable? And then we go back down on our, on our actual numerator? Okay, we can do that.
And I think that's where I'll. You know, if you really wanna do anything. You don't wanna have very percent, because we can't catch up the actual values.
We can't catch up to the cost of building, because if you add that numerator into it, you're, you know, that's part of it. But the real, the real issue is the cost per square foot has gone up to build.
Right.
Can't build it for what we've been assessing these board. So, yeah, okay, so go down on our numerator, go up on our cost per square foot, but um, and what we'll do is I'll pull everything from this region and see what the cost per square foot is, to get a better actual number. Okay, does that sound good to you guys?
I think that's very, I would, I would just try to make it like adjusted, without us having to conversation, I would, ask some sort of detriment.
Oh, I did, this is ICC, and that's where I was trying to get to the benchmark of ICC, but I.
Try to provide guidance to, for the city to say, hey.
That's the only reason I even drew the change of it, is because the last time it was changed, because we had to do it according to guys to see them. And, you know, Sean goes, and we told us that they accept, that's what it says to do. So we were trying to be reasonable and keep our cost per square foot down, and just raise our numerator in accordance with what ICC recommended. So we'll go lower than ICC recommendations on numerator, go up on cost per square foot.
And I think that's probably more realistic.
I, yeah, I like that.
What is table D, though? What are you going to, what are you playing? Well, I, yeah, but, oh, I didn't remember we read it last month, let's go ahead and read this ordinance.
As the ordinance adopts the residence.
And then we'll read it again next month.
Open to read ordinance, title, for the schedule of fees that we're doing, are we doing?
It's the, the feeling, I would want to. So we have a motion and a second to read title only, any public comment before we vote?
Just one point, do we, do we still need to do what you requested, since we are not looking at that right now? So I think that's a weak point.
Of the first.
Yeah, doing that, yeah, so we do not need to provide that, you know, but I think that's a weak point.
Roll call up. Oh, we had another public comment, Chris.
Uh, Chris Callahan, a four seventy-three, I have a couple of questions. Was I reading it wrong, on a five hundred thousand dollar home, number of permit fee was three hundred and four?
No, that's a, that, that was an incorrect statement, it was actually six twenty-five, and that's only for the plan review, that's not the permit fee.
Oh.
That's the plan review, that's so that the plans have to go to city hall, has to be reviewed by our zoning official, permit coordinator, and then once that's reviewed, that is actually sent back, if there's any corrections need to be made. And then there's a permit fee outside of that.
And then the pole, the pole barn examples, it was like five hundred dollars.
That was for the permit.
For the permit, so, I, I don't, guess I don't follow the numbers. If you build a pole barn for five hundred dollar building permit, and not five hundred thousand dollar home for, for what, permit, six hundred?
No, that's for the permit, that, that, that's not a permit fee, that six hundred and twenty-five dollars is for the plan review. So the pole barn doesn't have a necessary plan review fee, so.
I, I agree with eliminating or reducing fees for small projects, I think it's great for current homeowners.
Yeah.
You know, new permits, I think it's right to get as, as much as we possibly can. Uh, for existing people that build sheds or build pools or whatever, they, it should be less. Uh, I think, and, but I think everything should be tracked. You know, everything should have to, somebody has to come out and make sure that somebody's not putting the solar panels within the twenty feet mark or.
Yep.
You know, they can pay twenty dollars, I mean, fifteen dollars, they're something, just kids.
I agree. And we'll, we'll bring that back next with, next month as well. And I think next month, I'll make sure it's much more clear, it's difficult, this.
Yeah, I did not write that.
I didn't write that either, so. All right, roll, roll call up.
Yes.
John Allenford?
Yeah.
Paula Anderson? Yes, Sean Mcfield?
Yes.
Cole Martin?
Yeah.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number one sixty-eight and adopting new procedures for approval of permit fees in the city of Goshen to declare an emergency and for other purposes. Just as a reminder, this ordinance repeals one sixty-eight, which set the permit fees. Um, by adopting this, when we get to that point and do adopt it, moving forward, we'll adopt any permit fees by resolution. It makes it easier for you all to amend those as needed.
Okay, next item on the agenda, um, I guess it's the court update at this point, right?
Uh, not much update, I think my first, our, our cases are heard on the second Tuesday in the afternoon of each month. And I was not available to start doing that this month, and also not in November, and I think I'm, it's now on my calendar starting in December, and so I'll start taking over in December on any of those cases. I've talked to the chief earlier before the meeting started, and uh, we'll start trying to get a plan in place of how to coordinate, organize, uh, work with them, however we need to, you know, that's the update, that's just, no, it's all, it's the criminal, yeah. Traffic digits, city ordinances.
They want to.
Miss meters.
All this thing there.
Yeah.
Anything to be felony.
Felony goes to.
Yeah, felony goes to, felony person.
Let's move on to new city business, um, this item A, ordinance setting tax levy, this is our millage. And Pashana actually prepared millage all the way from two point nine all the way up to five, so there's ordinance system for all of them.
Yeah, she did a great job on that.
So whichever you guys, um, Jerry did some work looking at the millage rate also to see what the actual revenue would be for uh each one mill. It's essentially a hundred thousand dollar, a hundred and eight thousand dollars per one mill, so, uh, and we are at this point the lowest on our millage rate anywhere in Washington County. The second lowest to us is three point six mils. I forget which city it is, but that's the second lowest.
I believe that was on the calendar.
I don't remember.
I believe it was on the calendar.
Yeah, it was twenty-nine now, but.
Yeah, we're at two-nine, yeah, and we had gone down to two-nine, we were at three, three, yeah. We had to go to two-nine because of the change in the, the increase in property valuations that we had. And so we go up by a certain percentage every year, um, you know, I would like for us to increase our millage to be more like the rest of Washington County, but I don't wanna get to the average, which I think was around four point.
Four, 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 five.
Yeah, so.
I would say we could step it up a little bit, and then we can revisit it forth every single year, you know?
Well, we have to every year.
We have to every year, I mean, I would, you know, like I said, do a small step up this year, and then, and, you know, I know things keep costing more with everybody, but I think people already seeing the most recent tax increase, home impact bills, are gonna be really offended if we increase it much um, next this year with the tax increase that was already there.
Yeah, because I proposed it was basically going up one point one, so we're open, you know, with that at least, at least a one, like we were at one point one, or two point nine.
I mean, well, and what I say by going up, I actually just mean like a three, go up to a three point two, which is a little more than what we were before. But, you know, that's, we've still gotta think about how that's gonna affect everybody, so.
I just wanna voice that we are the wealthiest city in this county, and we. I know, but I, I, I think that being below every single city in Washington County, um, I, I, we, I think we have a hard time making, you know, all the improvements that we need with the millage, that we, the taxes that we generate now. Um, I think that this would at least give us a little bit of uh ability to potentially have some of those things that we need for infrastructure improvement. And we apply, we apply for grants right and left to get the things that we need, not things that we want, things that we need for the city. And we still don't have all, we don't have a skid steer, we don't have an excavator, we can't clean out our ditches. You know, I use my personal equipment, my bulldozer, my excavator regularly for the city, because we don't have that equipment. This would at least allow us to potentially buy some of that equipment that's needed for infrastructure improvement repairs.
So we'll bucket for it, we don't seem to use that.
We do use the bucket truck, we just haven't used it as much, because we haven't had the ability to yet, so.
And why, why in the budget? Would you put in a fifty thousand dollar line item for tree service?
There's nothing for fifty thousand dollars in the budget for tree service.
My personal opinion is that I can see, I would like to see three point two for this year and stay open to increasing it.
I would say three-six was the lowest. Or.
Four point five is the average.
It's three-two.
Three-two. Three-two is Tunny Town?
Yeah. Yeah, we're two-dives.
Yeah, and the average is four point five.
So it's three, two-three, is that all? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just looking in here.
List Tunny Town twice, under springdale, under.
And part of the school district, so you have to remember it's, kids are going to Tunny Town schools, or they're in the Tunny Town school district, even though they maybe, or it's, anyway, yeah, this is the, the school district is also dictating the.
Yeah.
Or that's, that's part of the division that they have over there.
I don't think there need to go up all the way, it's.
I like the three-one, five number.
Oh, it's three-five, three-eight.
I'd be happy to hear from the, the community if you, if you would, I'm at the point, I'd love to, love to get input, public input.
I'll speak up just candidly, we just talked about new, new construction and.
And not wanting to increase it thirty percent of health pay bills and whatever else we use that money. Now you're you're talking about. Raising the taxes on us, people that live here. Rather than try to get the same amount of money that that's going to generate. From. Increase on building permit fees. To new construction. One, this this doesn't make sense. We're going to raise. We're going to raise the taxes on us. The new people coming in are going to get. A true real value on on building permit that. They won't even see it. Um, on a seven hundred thousand dollar home, it's negligible with somebody that's going to have to pay with an extra building. So the funds, it's all in one basket. It all comes in the one place. So just, I I I've always said that I believe city councils. Are in charge of making sure they keep our taxes of assisting residents. Keep our taxes, yeah. Here we are going up. To from two nine to three five, that's over a fifteen percent increase.
And you know, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty four, we've already seen an increase in revenue of forty seven. Property taxes. It's own values are increasing. I'm only that we're lucky they can say increasing. I don't think we need to tack on additional.
Can you speak up this little bit? I mean, I can move up, but I don't come down. I'll be there. So we just can't hear you for a while. Uh, you're fine.
Um, Dan.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask. You're talking about percentages of increase for the millage. I understand that. Were you able to put a nominal value to? For example, if you went up to one point one or even just around number one. Is there a way to understand? And I know it depends on in parts of property value, but is there any way for us to estimate what kind of? Cash impact to our taxes we would feel? If you if you go up by say one. Like if we grabbed a random like five hundred thousand dollar house, so you went up by one, would we be able to? The example here was a three quarter of it, seven fifty. At two nine, it's four hundred thirty five dollars. At three five, it's five and a quarter. So, you know, roughly what?
I know.
Yeah, the hundred something dollars on a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar house. And that's if you had it valued at seven fifty. So if you live in a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar house, it's not valued at that when you go to the courthouse to pay your taxes. It's valued way less than that. So.
Hundred fifty, it says on what they've calculated here, a hundred and fifty dollars per mil. So if we go up a mil, that's another hundred and fifty dollars um on on hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So. If you've got.
But below that will give you the idea of the the big difference at that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Did that help? Yes, sir. Perfect. Thank you.
That's the success value.
Of which. Washington County reassesses.
Right, that's what they're just assessing, not not being. Not the fair market value, the success value.
The assessment.
For for me personally. This seems like. Next to nothing. A hundred and twenty five dollars or a hundred fifty dollars or five hundred dollars. For us to get on par with. The other cities. I mean, I probably spend eighty dollars at Pancho's for people on a given Friday. So. If this is a priority for the city. To me. You know, I don't have everybody's financial situation. I get that there's a variance. Not everybody negotiates, and I'm not. Implying I'm welcomed by anybody, but there's obviously financial disparity as there is in every community. But. You would assume that those same people with the 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 lower end of that financial bandwidth probably have lower value homes, where they feel it even less. Right? So. This is my take. This one.
Also, if you're sixty five or older, you can freeze your property taxes. It wouldn't affect you at all. So. That's another.
So the projected increase for as a as a whole would be fifty nine thousand two hundred twenty if we went to three five.
Yeah, that would be the increased revenue for the city would be fifty nine thousand.
Again, this is a discussion. We didn't put this four out here as. Our. Uh, take and leave it number. This is a discussion we propose.
But we do have to vote and have this approved tonight.
What is the top line revenue?
It's required by us for the.
Top line revenues in that point, uh, top line. What we receive in twenty twenty four.
Right, but what we receive in twenty twenty four is not going to be nearly the same as what we receive in twenty twenty five because they have increased and everyone's talking about. And so. My take is that we've all been kind of stung by the. Increase in assess value. We're going to have that extra income already coming in. I just don't feel like adding. Even more, you know, yes, I'm I'm fine with going up to like I said, three point two, but adding even more on to that. Again, this year after we've already had such a fight. Is going to just infuriate some people.
It's a devil's thing.
So, you know, like I said, I'm. Three point two is what I would be. Feeling okay with doing this year. Next year, we can. Come back and say let's increase it a little bit more and slowly. Increase that rate rather than hitting people with a. Um, kind of another impact like what people have seen this year with their increase in property tax.
Yeah, like we were saying, if you have a, let's just say your home's valued, if you know, if it's valued at a hundred fifty thousand dollars, you're only looking at what fifty dollars?
I understand that.
Increase fee for the year.
People perceive. And what is the reality of their budgeting and their finance for the year? Are two completely different things as far as public goods.
And this amount of money, I mean, twenty nine thousand. Rather than do just a direct cost increase to the homeowners. Sales tax. Is an option. Our sales tax is at a two percent.
Yeah, but we're in we're in line with everybody else. I mean, but we don't want to be above.
I don't know if that cost isn't. Direct to all property owners. You're going to get incomes from other areas coming into Goshen as opposed to just setting it to.
Us, the sales tax in Goshen is from the residents of Goshen. Most of our sales tax, its revenue comes from our online sales.
It might be, but not all.
A large portion.
This is a hundred, this is a hundred percent increase to residence only. And with sales tax, they vote on it. If people want to vote, increase their taxes, I'm fine with it, but I'm I'm not going to vote for a tax increase.
I think we got to think long term. I mean, I. Think at some point we're going to have to acquire service, like grab the police service. I think perhaps to have the construction, you're going to, let me finish, John. Rather add to the infrastructure to keep up with town as it grows. I'm not, I'm not a proponent of raising taxes, but we're in the bottom of the river. And I don't think it's unreasonable to be at least at the low end. Of surrounding community. I'm not trying to saddle leaders to sixty five dollar.
We're going to have to catch up sooner or later. You're not available either now or. In the future.
And I think to your point about the building permits. I think what they, what we're going to come back with is actually going to be an increase in new builds. I don't think it's going to be an increase to go ahead and. Shed to your backyard.
Yeah.
I think that was misrepresented.
And I think that the difference too, if you're looking at it with the increases, even if even if it was the increase as we have now for building permits, it's only going to generate an additional twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year. Our total income from building permits is about a hundred and hundred. Maybe a hundred and five, a hundred and ten thousand dollars total. And so it's not the same as the taxes that we get from property taxes or uh. Sales tax. Those are significantly different numbers. So.
So we are, we heard a three, three two, three five. Bert, what are you proposing?
I was three five or three eight.
John, what's your?
I I'll go with Paul, three two.
Three two. John.
Yeah, it's fun to sit here trying to look through the other communities and.
I mean. Paul is right. We can take. Now, we don't have to take the. The gigantic jump. This year. With what's going on.
Yeah.
If we go. With three two. Next year, we can go up again. But what what's going on now is going on next year. We're still having the same discussion. Well.
This has been the conversation forever with us. I mean, it's same tune, different group of people. Whenever we look back at city council in the past fifteen years and, you know, in. You know, that's why I'm like, yes, let's do an incremental increase. See where we're at with the funds that we're going to have coming in with all the other adjustments coming as well.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you. I like the.
Next year, if things are horrific, then we can say, let's go ahead and go up to four, four and a half. But, you know, again. I think that.
They're going to get a lot more kickback when I.
Yeah.
Well.
And we're talking twenty five or twenty three, two.
I'm willing to take the pain today. Question for Paul and Chris. Three five. John?
Three two.
So we have three at three two, two at three five and one for none. So, um. Are you guys want to go to? You know, three, three and compromise.
Three two. Well, we we're looking at averages of trying to take everybody's. Three two.
Teresa.
Three two. How many compromise? Three, three.
Three, three? That's a compromise between the.
Three, two.
The council members.
It's either that or no increase.
I'll go with, you know, again. Well, you can compromise at three, three. I'm not going to argue with the point one. Now let's put that.
Bert, you go with that. Three, three. John, you're still three, two. Paul, you go at three, three.
I'm at three, three.
Curtis, you go with a.
Three, three.
I feel like I.
Three, three.
Yeah, or or two, eight.
Okay, that's not an option.
So make a motion. We said the millage reading.
Or John, let me pull the ordinance for three, three.
Let me just suspend because this has to be adopted.
Tonight.
We need to suspend the rules, wait the second and third reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, waive the section third reading. And read the title on the.
Six, three, three.
Right?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we have a motion and a second. For a three point three mil increase. Um, any?
A point four increase.
I'm sorry, point, point four. Two, three point three.
He's going to get it in. Anyone who can.
Motion was to suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading. Break this ordinance.
So. Any public comment before we vote on that? Roll call vote.
Bert, Trey?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
No.
Paula Anderson?
Yes.
John Mayfield?
Yes.
Cole Martin?
No.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
That's four.
Yeah.
An ordinance levying a tax on the real and personal property within the city of Goshen, Arkansas. For the year two thousand twenty five, fixing the rate thereof at three point three mils. And certifying the same to the county clerk of Washington County, Arkansas, and to declare an emergency and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Thank you.
Have a motion to approve the ordinance in a second. Any public comment before we vote? All right, roll call vote.
Bert, Trey?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
No.
Paula Anderson?
Yes.
John Mayfield?
Yes.
Cole Martin?
No.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
Make a motion to. Enact the emergency clause.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to enact the emergency clause. Any public comment before we vote? Roll call vote.
Bert, Trey?
Yes.
John Allen Court?
No.
Paula Anderson?
Yes.
John Mayfield?
Yes.
Cole Martin?
No.
Curtis Vaughn?
Yes.
So it's at three point three mil. All right, we'll move on to the uh next item on the agenda, the resolution author. Well, sorry. Next item is the ordinance adopting accessory dwelling structure policy. This is not going to be adopting the ordinance. It's actually going to be a discussion about the uh. ADU policy. Where.
Did we get anything on that?
No, we didn't.
Okay, um, well.
Won't see anything in this budget.
Or there's nothing to like it at all? So essentially, Pashana put this in here because we had a discussion at the planning commission about ADUs and the policy for ADUs. Uh, it's in my bag. And because of the state law changing uh this year, we had to adopt a new, we will have to adopt a new policy for ADUs to. With the new state law. So. Part of that discussion was about what Goshen wants for their ADUs or accessory buildings within the two acre lots that we have. On the lot minimums. So the planning commission had had a discussion about this previously where they had a discussion about allowing up to four total buildings on a two acre lot. Primary on a two acre lot. So you'd have your primary residents, you could have something like a pole barn or a shed. Um, and then you could have. A pool house and then you could have an ADU now because the state mandates that you have to be able to allow them to have an ADU. And accessory dwelling unit is defined, I can read the definition from the the state. Uh, is per act three thirteen is accessory dwelling means a self-contained and independently accessible living unit up to thousands per feet.
There.
Sorry. An accessory dwelling unit means a self-contained and independently accessed accessed living unit. On the same parcel as a single family dwelling of greater square footage that includes its own cooking, sleeping and sanitation facilities and complies with or otherwise exempt from any applicable regulatory requirements. And this is up to a thousand square feet. So that's the new state law. So we have to allow those. Can't say that you can't have those. Um, one of the things that. You know, the planning commission has identified is that not all ADUs are going to be a thousand square feet. They may be over a thousand square feet. So if you're over a thousand square feet, then we're going to call it a secondary structure slash dwelling. Because that would be either, you could have it as a structure, meaning you've got a pool house that's two thousand square feet, but it only has a bedroom and a bathroom. That'd be a structure. If it was a pool house with all of those things, then that would be an accessory dwelling, a secondary dwelling. So, so the the definitions on what we're proposing is there's an ADU, which is less than a thousand, a thousand square feet or less. And then um. A secondary dwelling would be, you can't be over seventy five percent of the total square footage of your main primary residence for that dwelling or that secondary structure. And then you can also have on your same. Parcel and accessory structure, which would be like a pole barn shed, something like that. So you could potentially have up to four. Buildings on your two acre lot, as long as it means all of the setback requirements, as long as it means all of the septic requirements, as long as it. Fits within all of those restrictions that are already there. This would not supersede your POA covenants. So if you live in a subdivision that has POAs, this doesn't, you know, it doesn't supersede those.
But technically, they would have to also conform.
They don't.
Private property.
Private.
Just the city cannot.
We can't, of course.
With the restrictive covenant, covenants, you can put anything in there and it can. With the restrictive covenant, covenants, you can put anything in there and it can be more restrictive.
Yeah. So the POAs would be able to be more restrictive. And it says that in the law, if you look at the actual law itself, it's written in there that way. We, this was back before this law ever went into effect. They had a discussion about how many structures would be possible. You know, part of the issue was that we have a lot of people that build pool houses in Goshen. Then, you know, the question of, well, can you have a, you know, a smaller accessory dwelling unit? Besides the pool house or, you know, in combination with it to the side. And then can we have a little? You know, shed to put the lawnmower in. But, you know, two acres is a large parcel. It's not small. That's a big parcel. So if you've got a two acre lot, I mean, part of it is. If you're still meeting those setback requirements and you're still meeting the septic requirements for everything, it's gonna be hard to fit all that in there. And not have it, you know, done tastefully. I, I, we, that's what they felt. That's what we felt. So. Um, that was kind of the the consensus among the group at the planning commission. And that was before the ADU policy came out. But then this does push that into that as well. Um, so. And what what really they discussed was an ADU, meaning a pool house that had all of that in it. You know, an actual dwelling unit and then a separate detached garage and then a separate like shed. That was the four that we kind of talked about, but uh, but any combination of those. As long as they meet all those other requirements. And again, they, you know, the 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 covenants of the POAs. Within the communities would supersede all of that. So. So that's what we will be bringing back to the. Board of zoning adjustment. Brian's gonna be working on an ordinance that's gonna incorporate all that. They'll read through that at the at the board of zoning adjustment and the planning commission will make recommendations for council. So then, once they make those recommendations, if they like, you know, everything in the ordinance, it looks good. They'll make a recommendation to the council on what they recommend from that. But just know that that's probably what's coming from the next, after the next meeting, so the November meeting for us.
So in summary, we are meeting, we will be meeting the state law.
We will.
Yes.
Yes.
Being a little more forgiving on what you can do.
Well, we're setting some other guidelines on what we, what we will allow. What we previously had, yes. And that was one of the things before the ADU policy came about at the state level. There was a, it was recognized that that was too restrictive in the city. The council, I mean, the planning commission felt like that was too restrictive and that we've moved beyond that at this point because we have so many people that do have. Large parcels. They wanna have a pool house. They wanna have an accessory dwelling. And so that was why that came up previously. And that's the other thing with this ordinance, it would, it has nothing to do with um relation. So that there is no like context of relation. Because in the city ordinances we have now. If you were a relative of the property owner with the two acres, then yeah, you could still build a structure there. So, so it was a, you know, it alleviated a lot of those people that didn't wanna have a relative living there. They just wanted to build it for when they had guests or when they, you know, parties or, you know. Any questions about that? I mean, you know, you get to discuss it more once we see the actual ordinance, once the planning commission makes their official recommendation, but. That got put on here because I think Sean thought we were actually adopting the ordinance that this means, but it's not. We have to have the public hearing first. Because it does change zoning. So let's move on to the. Item C, which is a resolution authorizing a hay mowing contract. And I'm assuming you guys want to go with the recommendation from the parks commission.
I think, I think it was well written. I think several letter correcting that that competition was good. They did match that great.
They have.
Fair enterprise.
Is, is that the same as you thought?
Different from the.
J, J and B.
J and B. Farm, did the meshes be what they were?
Now, they, so they both submitted applications.
The RFQ. So, but the, the parks commission recommended uh J and B farms based on. They wanted to see not just one person have the contract for six years. It felt like it was beneficial to allow for other, other people to also benefit from more than hay.
So, and they had a really good, really good presentation. They were at the meeting. They had a list of references, pictures of all their equipment. So.
I mean, the people that have been given, have been given a good job.
Could you guys please speak up for those members?
The, the people that were doing the mowing were doing, they were doing a good job. They've been doing a good job. They still want to do it, but the parks commissioner.
So at, at every three years, ever, whoever wants to to apply to do this contract for hay has to submit a RFQ. That's the process. So you put the, you put it in the paper and then they can resubmit for another three years. That is correct. And they did submit for another three years. The parks commission as a whole, the, there were four members that were there at the meeting. Recommended changing to the new RFQ with this other group of individuals that are also residents here locally. To do the hay contract.
Only two groups submitted, the national.
Correct. J and B farms, yeah.
What made the other group stand out?
They were at the meeting. They had a lot of recommendations from other people that they'd voted for. Um. So. They had a really, I think, robust presentation.
I read both, what both of them submitted. They wrote a very, very detailed. Submittal. What they wanted to do, what they can do. Is what they do and what they've done.
I mean, I guess my assumption is like. It's a submittal, but we've got somebody there who we know can do it and wants to continue to do it. I don't know why we would switch.
I think it's because of what Bert said, fair enterprise. You don't wanna give one person the contract every single time. If you have an, an outside, you know, contract that comes in with something that may look even better than what you've been using. Then they're wanting to give them a fair shot.
And we're saying this the way the park commission liked.
There, there was a statement that went out from the park commission that was very clear that that's how they, yeah.
Well, I didn't see Jeannie Bell's recommendation. Jeannie, Jeannie Bell's recommendation.
This is her grandson and his dad that are doing the.
He was a, a hairdresser in Goshen twenty five years ago.
Yeah.
When I was four years old, I did my hair.
This family that is, that is doing, that is proposing to do the hay have been in this, in this area for three generations that I know of. And Debbie McDonald that owns the property adjoining the park, it's her nephew. So.
I'd make a motion about a resolution of the planning commission's, or parks commission's recommendation. They can read it.
Second.
Now I gotta be back to it.
So we have a motion and a second to re. All those in favor?
Resolution authorizing mayor contract with J and B farms for hay mowing and baling at Mill Branch Park. That can approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any public comment before we vote? All those in favor? Now I do wanna say, meshes have done an excellent job and I do appreciate all they've done, you know, for keeping up with the mowing. Alright, we'll move on to. Our next item, the resolution requesting a moratorium for what we can, can afford. So, uh, are you guys familiar with why this is in here?
From what I read, I think I am, but maybe it's the cliff note.
So the cliff notes are that they're proposing to build ninety three homes at the top of Blue Springs. And those ninety three homes are gonna be basically on one acre lots. Um, there was a presentation that I wasn't able to attend. Uh, Jerry Jackson had attended for me while I was working. At the uh, Washington County Planning. Um. Some of the information that was presented from Crafton and Toll's engineering draft of how they were gonna do this was not accurate. I mean, even some of it I read, I knew was not accurate. They had thirty five mile hours. The zone through there, it's a fifty mile hour zone. Um, they haven't done, I don't think, an adequate job of looking at uh soil uh. And runoff on how much soil they're gonna have to move for uh where they're gonna build these. This was previously within the Goshen planning area and. The way I understand it, after speaking with some of the actual uh planning, Washington County planning commissioners, is that they don't have hired. Independent engineers to look at these plans when they come forward. So they're just going on. Whatever the engineering firm that has put this proposal together is stating with some really.
Dubious.
Just things that weren't accurate in the, in the actual presentation. Um. The Washington County Health Department has never approved that number of septic tanks that close to the lake in one concentration ever. Um, so. There's not even a guarantee that it would be approved even with the, the, the health department. So. Um. We feel like that it would be, I think, very difficult on the city of Goshen to incur two hundred and fifty more cars every day. Going up and down Blue Springs Road without, you know, any consideration for. Ingress, egress, in and out of these subdivisions. It's not at all planned like any of the subdivisions that Goshen would, you know, put forward. Uh, it's, it's just checker box houses and rode in, rode out, rode in, rode out. Uh, I think it's four different entrances into this subdivision, ninety three homes. So, you know, we were, we are trying to maybe push this back to say, hey. You need to have at least an independent engineer look at this and say. You know, that it actually conforms to the standards that you're, you're saying that it conforms to before. It just gets accepted on its, you know, face value. And, and, you know, this was. A request as well from some of the people on the planning commission for us to try to have a statement of what our concerns were.
So a couple of questions. It was in our planning area, but that does not preclude Washington County from doing what they want.
Well, they took away the planning areas with the new legislation this, earlier this year. So we no longer have planning areas in Indian cities. And so because of that, as a result, Washington County hasn't caught up. So they've never had, you know. Large scale subdivisions in areas where there was former planning that where we actually. You know, went through and, and looked at all this. But at this point, that's where we are. So we.
And so this resolution would then.
Request them to have an independent engineering firm at least, put a moratorium on it till they can.
It's just you all making a.
A request.
But there's no teeth.
No, no teeth.
But court, court doesn't have to say day or day.
No.
I urge you, thanks.
They, they could, but I think that they want to listen and I think they want, you know, to, to be able to. Pause a little bit and catch up on some of the things that they haven't been able to catch up on.
Well, I've gotten several calls about it. There's many.
I know. I've gotten a lot of calls too.
Yeah, the court was very receptive to our concerns about what the development might have with actual cost of city. Because we would definitely incur additional expenses of maintaining a low uh police presence there. Uh, even though we have no jurisdiction over that section at all. So they were very receptive. Uh, to our concerns and had to put forth uh to the mayor and myself to pursue this.
So are specs on the homes? I heard you say cookie cutter isn't fifteen hundred square foot homes?
I think the minimums have to be at least, uh, if I'm not mistaken, with the two thousand. Yeah, I think it was, I think it was two thousand, about fifteen hundred, two thousand.
Does Judge Deakins align at all?
I don't know.
He's being neutral.
We'll give by state law.
They're stuck because they can't, they can't do a lot because they don't have anything currently in their, in their, they, so Washington County doesn't have. A planning zoning like we do. And, you know, Judge Deakins has tried to move that forward. And the court court has not quite gotten there yet. So they're really wanting to do use by right. And, and that they want everything to come to them, which, you know, that's the way it's been for a long time. But the problem is is that. Without any, any zoning in the county, more and more of these people are gonna come in and buy up these large farms and just plop down, you know. Homes on it. Chief Travis, you have a comment?
This is also gonna increase our call line.
Yes.
Just that stuff. Because we are the closest agency in county can't get there fast enough. The septic wrong issue is will increase our costs.
So it's up Blue Spring?
Just past Bevraoma. So if you go past Riverside, it's just up at the top of the hill.
I was informed today that there, uh, this was by somebody that's over, that there is a traffic study. But, because there is concern, they, they brought on the hilltop, right? And you got a fifty mile hour. Anyway, just FYI, that, I think that's.
The, the increased traffic. That you're gonna get.
I'll take that one. At the intersection.
At the intersection and out forty five.
Yes.
Gonna be substantial. I mean, you're gonna have. Some coming this way, you're gonna have some going the other way.
I, I think the long and short of it is, we're not gonna be able to stop it. But we want there to be a little bit better oversight. And that's what I think the county's also wanting. And they, I think they're really kind of requesting us to kind of say, hey. Can you guys please put pause on this for a minute until you can catch up? So.
So it's a resolution. I'm making motion to.
There are a couple more comments out there, I think.
Sure. There will be no inspection, those will pay bill and spec at the time.
That's right.
There will be no inspection. Orson County does not have building inspection period.
Also gonna increase your fire department stuff.
Yeah, also what?
Mr. Callan, you had your.
Uh, yeah, I, I think a couple of things I've, I've been thinking about it as well is. What school district will those homes be in?
That's in Springdale School District.
At least that traffic will go that way. But ninety percent of the traffic, I believe, will.
But if the new legislation, it's school choice.
Ninety percent of the traffic, especially the truck and construction traffic, is gonna come down. Our part of Blue Springs that we are gonna pay for the redo at least once or twice during the three year period. While all those trucks go back and forth and fifteen hundred to three thousand, like, you know, twenty five, thirty ton trucks. Going up and down Blue Springs. Is, are we gonna have to widen it after? So the traffic survey is, is good to have done. And I think at least we ought to be able to get. The county to repave our portion of Blue Springs Road when they're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, the impound, some.
There's no mechanism for that.
Washington County planning, um, Blue Springs already in the work to be extended.
That's what, that's what Crafton Toll had said. And, and then we found out that what they're really talking about was that they're gonna improve the area in front of the subdivision. But, but the way it's worded is the planned expansion of Blue Springs Road and widening of Blue Springs Road. And that's the way it reads. You read it. If you go to the county website, that's what, I mean, it's, it's on there.
That would be, that would be, that would be one thing to ask.
It is. And we know all these things. We're just stuck. This is where we are as the, the one thing we can do is to try to do something to say. Please pause for a minute and, you know. We do. Yeah.
We did have members of the, of the planning commission.
Yes.
Suggested that we, we talk to our representative. So that they would push more of the zoning aspect within the county, which, which could potentially help long term.
And, and, and as going back with Rex earlier. Us knowing that these things are gonna be happening, this is not gonna be an isolated incident. We're trying to plan for this. So when we're making requests. Uh, increasing our revenue is not possibly just looking to go out and buy. We're trying to plan for this. So when we're making requests, uh, increasing our revenue, it's not possibly just looking to go out and buying equipment and just spending the money. It is trying to prepare for, you know, uh, another council to have a meeting, another group of management to have the means to do the things that the city's gonna need. So it's, it's, this is about long-term planning. It's not just that we're sitting here going, we should raise this because we need, um, another piece of equipment. This is about long-term planning.
What motion's saying? Would it be, you know, Bay of Brothers read the title?
Yes, sir.
You play along with the script. Second.
So have a motion in a second to read the title only. All those in favor?
Right.
A resolution requesting a moratorium on certain subdivision approvals by Washington County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve in a second? Any public? Any public comment? All right. All those in favor?
All right.
Approved. Now we can move on to our twenty-twenty-six budget proposal.
Question, why are you pulling it up?
Yeah.
When are we gonna get the detail?
The what?
The detail. Behind all of this.
What do you mean the, the what?
The detail, the pericle.
Exactly what you asked.
Talking about your salaries?
Oh, the salary sheets? So that'll all come at the next meeting. So we just put this in there. It's just, uh, it's the same as what it's been. The only difference is, is that uh, as far as the salaries, we planned for a three percent increase for all employees except for two. There were two employees we were gonna give a little bit more because they're way down at the bottom. Uh, that's Ivan and Abby. They're the newest employees in the city. I think that we allocated other five percent or sixty percent again, just based on where they are as far as how low their salary is. Does that help? Explain? I mean, we'll, we'll definitely have all those actual numbers and salary appendix with the next one. So but as far as that's kind of the, the plan that you say, you know, that's where we are this year is three percent of everybody. And then, uh, two people that would get a little bit more to bring them up because they're so far at the bottom. So.
I just requested as you're working on this, if you would shoot us the updates as you're working on it, just so we're not having the, you know, a out-of-date one that we're looking at when you guys have already made some updates. You know, if you're updating them over the next month, two months, that kind of thing.
I mean, I updated it literally like, I think it was Monday.
Yeah, because I, yeah, we wanted to make sure you got the most recent, yeah, it's not sending one Friday, Monday.
I mean, and part, I'll be quite honest, part of it is, you know, we're looking at, I didn't know exactly what mileage we were gonna be at. I didn't know what our incomes will truly look like. Again, Paulie, you said about our, you know, property taxes overall because the valuations went up, it may increase significantly. We don't know yet. We don't know what that number's gonna look like.
They anticipate?
The newest assessment is twenty-twenty-seven.
The
Countywide assessment will be end up in twenty-twenty-seven.
On talking about like, you know, that we all paid more this year, right?
Right.
What I'm wondering is
But we won't see that till we start getting our revenue in, income
Right.
In that
January.
Yeah, January. But a large bulk that comes in at the end of the year, I don't know if you've looked at our income to date, but you'll see that in, you know, you know, December, December, we're gonna get some pretty big checks. So
Yeah.
But this is the planning document.
It is.
See the proposed increases.
Mm-hmm.
Um, content does not correspond by the mileage increase nor the uh, program increase.
It doesn't.
It does not. Our bottom line is
We're, we're over budget right now because we didn't, and, and I tried to whittle down as much as we could to get under budget with what we have, but with some of the expenses that we anticipate with like additional, you know, park maintenance with seasonal labor, um, and I, you know.
But we can't approve of upside down motions.
No, we can't, you know, but we could, this is for you guys to look at this month. I'm hopeful that next month with the adjustments, knowing what our mileage rate is, this, I mean, we'll definitely have it under budget. The other thing too is that we didn't incorporate any of the additional uh, revenue, uh, carryover revenue that we usually have from year to year. So we generally have, you know, anywhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars of carryover funds that are from the previous year that are unspent. So Now on this, yes, on what we, what you have in front of you, it's, it shows a negative
Twenty-five.
For twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Oh, but that's only because, that's only because we don't get those payments in until late in the year. Yeah. But we will, I'm, I'm certain will be under budget.
So he's gonna hope the economy holds out, people buy stuff and sales tax for the next three months.
Actually, most of the revenue we'll see, we come from the, on the county side.
Yeah.
I'm just, yeah, you know, there's always questions as far as what the
What that number's gonna be.
It's gonna be, yeah.
You know, Arkansas then, um, even at the state level, um, the revenue, sales tax revenue has, has been up as high as even this economy uh, as much as ten to twelve percent. Arkansas revenue has been up. So that's used indicative of where county's gonna set. Take the way like Washington, they're gonna probably escape that over agents, also the agent of the state.
So a, a few of the things that I do wanna touch on with the, the budget, some of our capital expenditures for um, twenty-twenty-six. So if you look at capital expenditures um, for the proposal, I go, we have the animal control, infrastructure, we've got on there uh, the eight thousand dollars. Some of that's gonna be, we've gotta buy some portable kennels to go in the, the new shop. And then we've also gotta get a, a container thing for the back of the truck that we're gonna be retrofitting the police vehicle. So that's what some of that's gonna be for. Um, and then the seventy thousand dollars for the police vehicle, again with the outfit on it. And the park improvements, that ninety thousand, that's because we have to match part of that for that pavilion. So we've got the two hundred and seven thousand dollar grant. That's the merit to be able to match that, come to three hundred thousand. Um, and if you guys look at the drawings that are in front of you, this is kind of the proposed pavilion design and plan. And this is after working with M- M- MBL architects. We had tried to do a prefab um, design, but the prefab design, when we put it to the, the pencil to it, it did not make sense because it was gonna be over budget. We couldn't build what that prefab uh, pavilion looked like for less than about five hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand. This, uh, we've already priced the trusses uh, from the trust company over here on Highway forty-five. They're actually gonna offer us uh, a huge discount on the trusses because they want help. Uh, so that's good. Um, we've already met with a rock lane, uh, uh, company that's gonna do the rock lane for us. So we kind of have an, an idea of what this is gonna cost. We think we're gonna be able to get it close to budget at three hundred for everything. So now that doesn't include the electric, which we put in for separate, uh, and it doesn't include the plumbing or the septic. So those are two separate items for it. And includes everything else. So and that's why that uh, Mill Branch Park Electricity, fifteen thousand, septic, ten thousand. And then the metal shop outfitting, and that's gonna be all the things that we're gonna need inside the shop, like storage cabinets and things that we don't have currently that we're not gonna be able to move over from the other shop because the police department's gonna take those. So, because we're gonna essentially allow the police department to use the current shop for all of their vehicles and storage and if they need to work on things. So
So park improvements is all of that ninety thousand dollars is gonna be a match for our grant?
That's correct.
Okay. I just, you know, we may wanna just designate that as a note out there to the side. So
Yeah.
That's clear.
Yeah.
Is the, we've received the grant or we've submitted?
No, 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 we've received it. We have two hundred and seven thousand dollars that we got. And then we're using the land. So we, it's a fifty-fifty match grant, but because we've got the, we purchased the land, we don't have to have a full fifty percent match. So we're only gonna have to come up with a twenty-five percent essentially. If that makes sense.
So what you're seeing is basically our
Our portion.
Our, our responsibility.
At least, yeah.
And the project, the total cost of the project is gonna be three hundred. That's the plan.
Yeah, that's a good, good note, Paula, puts that out there because everybody is restricted. It's already been allocated.
I mean, yeah, we need to, like I said, um, and, yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, not nickel and dime. This is well done. Street signs, ten thousand dollars. I thought we just replaced them all.
Yeah.
Street signs were part, oh, you're seeing them to the, so some of the signs that we still need to replace, we have speed limit signs that are, you can't read. Um, it's not necessarily, no, it's not the actual like street names. We have all those. So
I think the only big thing I saw is, as you said earlier, Merrick, hundred eighty-five thousand for roadway maintenance and construction. How much?
No. And the other thing I did roll in is, you know, we had road resurfacing as the line item. And I think we just need to have that as roadway maintenance and construction is all one thing because in next year, what I'm anticipating is Spring Park Lane has been a, just a nightmare for maintenance for us because every time it rains, it washes out. I've gotta get the guys over there. We put loads and loads of gravel on it. Uh, so we'll want to surface that next year. I'm anticipating that's gonna be between eighty-five and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for just that street. And we're still got, you know, Wyman, there's a whole section over there that the trees uproot, the, the asphalt that needs to be cut out and needs to be put in concrete. Um, so that the, you know, trees aren't continued to, to root out that. We have a few more culverts that need to be replaced. It isn't. And that's part of the issue is that we can't use general fund money to put into the street fund, but we can't use the street fund for anything but streets. So I did put some tree trimming in there and the reason I did that is because there are certain trees that we have in the city that are so large that it's not safe for our staff to remove those. And so that's why that's still in there is, is a line item. And they will be getting busy this fall on trimming all of these branches that kind of hang over the, the roads that are smaller. Um, that's just been something that they just haven't had time to do yet. So
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five for tree trimming, yes. And I, and I don't know that, you know, I'm not certain that we'll do that, but
Four thousand so far for this year, we had twelve thousand for the
Correct. And we are gonna have to have some more removed. We just haven't had them do it yet. So yeah. And again, this is a working document. It may have to change based on what we see as needs when, you know, things come up.
Basically, you know, whenever we were doing, we had to bump our mileage rate down to two point nine. I thought that somewhere along the line, they had given us an estimate of what we were gonna see revenue eyes from Washington County for that period timeframe or for next year essentially.
Washington gave us the estimate?
Well, I mean, or they, you know, we, we were told that we had to reduce it to two point nine so that we would not exceed the, what was it, ten percent from year to year. So they base that on some of that, right? So I'm just wondering where those numbers are that they base that on so that, you know, we, because if we're they say, you know, you gotta get down to two point nine so you don't go over the ten percent, you know, again, are we looking
Are we bumping up against it again? That's what you're asking?
I mean, are we, do we have a nine point five percent increase? Do we have a nine, you know, again, I don't know what
I think if we, once we notify, we increase that and they'll be able to tell if we're gonna go over our percentage increase.
But now I was just, you know, again, for the numbers for the budget for next year, to get a more accurate number on what that income is going to be from our property tax or
Um, just what Kishana sent me. She was doing some calculations at home. What, what we increased by, we're looking at about forty thousand dollars. From, from
Two point nine to three point three.
Exactly. Right. But I'm talking about, this is, you know, we won't see that money until
Exactly.
Twenty-six. I'm talking about what money we're gonna see in twenty twenty-five.
On our, on our current two point nine that we have in the home.
How do we save that money if we reduce the bill?
Well, we saw more money because the um, assessors, the, the assessment value of all of our houses went up. So our value on our property is more, so we're paying more taxes on that higher property value.
Good sound that.
Right. We should already have
Yeah, I don't know. It's a question of
Oh, you mean because of current, right now?
Right. We all paid more taxes this year than what we did previous year by a lot. Uh, because of the reassessment of property values. So I'm just wondering what that number's gonna be whenever we get that in twenty twenty-six. Because if we know it's gonna be less than ten percent, but we're between five and ten percent, ask that. Again, just see what that number should be. Anyway, that was just kind of the investigation thing maybe.
Are there any things on the budget currently that stick out that we feel like we need to rework?
It was right, police car.
Yeah, I, I think we need to mention about the website.
Oh, so the website, um, part of the, yeah, so we've, we've had two different companies that we met with this past week about the website improvements. And so one of the things is right now is we have a Wix system. That's the operating system or the, I guess, the web hosting system that we use. Lacey's been managing that kind of on her own, um, with just basic knowledge of how to use Wix. Um, she's done a great job, but we've outgrown it. So at this point, that's part of the issue is that there's functionality that we can't continue to improve on or maintain on the system that we're on. And so both the companies we met with recommended that we move over to a different type of web hosting system. Um, and that price to get that completely redone is gonna be anywhere between five and thirty. They don't think it's gonna go e- even close to thirty.
Five and thirty.
Depending on how much we have done. Yeah. So a lot of it, that's what the cost is. So I'm thinking it's probably gonna come in somewhere between five and ten. But again, I can't tell you that for certain until we have more detail from them. So I put a higher number. I anticipate we're gonna bring that down and amend the budget.
On the ground business.
Yes, we all are.
Yeah. And, and, and Berks probably has more experience because he, you know, he can work for us, but I have a private website. And, you know, um, they are expensive to maintain. Uh, they are expensive to get up and building. They, they, they do run into the thousand dollars. Uh, this is a, this is just a necessary cost of an organization.
But part of it also is we're gonna be converting to dot gov. And so we're gonna be moving from dot net to dot gov. And then this, this would also include the training of our staff to be able to update and maintain the website. So it's not just, they're gonna build the website and it's done. They're also gonna provide training to the staff on how to update the sections of the website that they're able to maintain on their own, on a daily basis. Yeah. So it's, it's, you know, and I don't think it's gonna come anywhere close to twenty-five, but I can't. I don't wanna, I don't wanna go in and say it's gonna cost five or ten and then it ends up costing fifteen or twenty. So I put that in there as a placeholder. I mean, I definitely think that will end up being adjusted as soon as we figure out what the total cost is actually gonna be. So
So from Brian taking over.
Um, yeah, I was gonna jump in. I don't know. Um, I just fall apart guessing it may run an extra four to six hours a month. But I could be way off on that. I was like the other way.
I mean, you can get paid for it still. You're not getting revenue.
Um, do we not get revenue from me taking over? Well, why aren't we paying elephants to do it now? We're not, no, no. The county prosecutor's office is handling it. I don't think we're paying them.
Why not? That's part of the problem.
I have the same interpretation that we were gonna see.
So no, it's, it's gonna be a
But they're getting what we're paid for.
Yes.
I'm not, as far as, but as far as the total goes, and I know, Jerry, you asked me last month, I really, I don't know. I mean, I, from a budgeting point
We're, we're looking at most likely looking at about a ten percent increase. And then if it goes higher, we'll adjust it as
I know we can, yeah, move it around, but I, so we're not paying them now in the outcome of whatever you're applying, taking you get back now?
We do, but like Jason, like Chief Travis said, a lot of things aren't getting
They're not, we're not
We're not getting any
Fewer expenses a lot. Yeah.
But that's the problem.
Yes.
Like, I mean, we're gonna have to pay you for your work. So we're gonna, yeah, we might see some revenue, but I'd say
Possibly. I, I don't know what all has been going on. And so that's, but it sounds like, uh, chief is aware of
Well, right now
The differences that we may see. So
Again, we're not getting anything because like Chief Travis related, everything is pretty much in this mess and we're not getting anything for their effort.
Is it getting dismissed or?
A lot of it is getting just dismissed.
It's just straight up. So, okay.
So we could see revenue from it, but again, we don't know exactly how much time it's gonna take either for Brian to be able to take this on.
So he was just doing that out of goodness and horror?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
He, he kind of inherited it. He doesn't know how or why. And we're stopping it. Yeah.
We didn't, I didn't even realize that's what was going on. That, that we didn't have some sort of agreement.
So we'll just probably have to wait a year to see how that uh, works itself out. But we are putting an increase for that, just to have it Uh, works itself out, but we are putting an increase for that, just to have it there.
I, I would say maybe a thousand dollar a month increase. And that's, that's four hours of work and then it will just kind of gauge. I, depending on what's put out, I mean, I, you know, a lot of things, that's what I was wanting to dismiss. A lot of things get placed under advisement, which is kind of an informal thing that we do around here. But you still get fines and costs out of it, so.
But if it's dismissed, you don't get anything.
A typical court session though.
It depends on the document.
Yeah, depending on the document.
I mean, I.
I mean, our document's gonna be a lot smaller than, say, Springdale Bay, it'll work down.
But it's not like you have a time.
One o'clock, starting at one o'clock in the afternoon, and when negotiation cases get called is. Uh, and then there will be time before that meeting with pro se defendants, things like that. So I'll have to get my hands around it and figure it out, but.
Even if it doesn't get dismissed, even if it does against person, that doesn't mean you're gonna get money either.
We should get some time to bring you from here. It may not be much.
So we'll see.
Yeah. The county takes a huge portion of our funds. Alright, um, and I'll, I'll send out updated budget as, as it gets updated, so you guys can look at it ahead of time. And again, I'm kind of waiting on our year, but the end of year, as we start getting our revenue and expenditures back. Um, you know, to calculate exactly what our revenue is gonna be for next year.
Do you plan on saving any of our revenue that we get? Let's see, it looks like we just spend it all. Actually, we've actually, we've actually stayed pretty neutral. We stay pretty neutral for one year from the next. Actually, we have surpluses.
Speaking of budget, since we have our meeting tomorrow afternoon for C D, um, everybody go and just roll into C D.
I'm not gonna be able to make the meeting tomorrow. I have surgery tomorrow.
Sorry.
It's unplanned.
Just wanted to make mention of that, since we're meeting about that tomorrow.
As a good question, uh, we've actually had surpluses that have been rolling over bowling there for the next, it's a big start.
Alright, uh, I guess we can move on to the Sunday alcohol sales update. Did you guys see that?
All I saw on air was.
Let me pull up the email from Abby, because Abby's the one that followed up on it. I felt that she included this information for you guys.
Maybe if we get the alcohol sales on the next, uh. Yeah, next ballot, that will be an offset to the increase in taxes.
Your revenue.
So. She spoke to the, the, uh, city clerk of Fayetteville to gather information on the process for allowing alcohol sales on Sundays in our city. She explained that, uh, their efforts began with petitioning. Uh, and since the state of Arkansas does not provide an official petition form for this purpose. The petitioners and their supporting entities created their own form, uh, to have a measure placed on the ballot for public vote. We will need to collect signatures from at least fifteen percent of our city's crime population. That's three hundred and sixteen signatures total. And then she said that we could use the form that they had created. So if we want to do that, we just have to get three hundred and sixteen people in the city, citizens, voting citizens to sign. And then we could get it, we can get it. We can get it added as a ballot. In November. So if you wanna get it before this, for this November's election.
Then we're gonna get moving.
You gotta get moving, so.
I'll pass that on to the three of us. There you go, collecting.
Okay, so Abby can, if they wanna do it, Abby can help them get the, the form for the petitioner measuring. How to get that started, so. Sorry, I thought you guys had that. Alright, uh, let's see, the next item is the project updates. So the only significant updates I have is that we, oh, the other thing I didn't talk about the budget was the fifty thousand string fees. And I've talked to Birch already about it. Part of that, that, part of that engineering fees is that we have planned on applying for a FEMA grant. To build a FEMA slash civic center out back. And so, um, I've already met with N B L architects about that. It'd be about a five to seven thousand square foot complex. And we would, but we have to have drawings and engineer design before we can apply for those grants. And these grants are like three, four million dollar grants. These are huge grants. Uh, city would be, uh, on the hook for ten percent of that. So, so that's something that, you know, that's why that engineering fees is there is for us to come up with a design, drawings, plan for. A FEMA center. Cause right now we have no, have no real, I mean, technically. Our city hall and the, the Sally ports down there is our FEMA shelter. That's why we have the generator. I mean, that building, if a tornado hit, it would blow over with the, I mean, it would, it just wouldn't stand up. So we need something that is more substantial and, uh, I'd like to incorporate that into like a civic center so that you can have seniors meet there. Uh, we'd be able to have our council meetings there, move city hall probably to that area. So, so that's what that's for. And I don't know that it's gonna take that, but, you know, it's not cheap to get engineered designs and drawings for us to apply for these grants. And so. Uh, for big grants, you have to have some upfront costs on it. So that's what that's, that's for. Um, but as far as our projects currently underway, any season, you know, a, a great job getting the construction done on the north side of the park. If you have them down there, take a look, they've, they've got a bunch, uh, are starting to, you know, form it up to where they can get it, uh, board. Uh, M and M excavation has already started kind of staging on our south entrance, uh, park area back there on the parking lot. With the culverts to get those started to replace. They've already marked and lots of the, the actual culverts to, to be replaced. Uh, already as far as cut the asphalt so they can dig it out easier. Um, and then, uh, we should be ready within the next month to take these designs for the pavilion. Back to the state, cause we have to have a conference call with the state, the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism. To give them the site plan, the actual architectural design and drawings. And then once they sign off on it, we will, uh, send it out for bid. So we really won't know what the actual like cost is gonna be as far as. We've calculated and, and figured what we think the cost is gonna be, but when we put it out for bid, that's when we're really gonna have an idea of what it's actually gonna cost.
Start a dirt work.
They did, oh yeah, so the, um, the dirt work behind city hall, some interesting things there. So our septic lines are gonna end up being right close to the building and actually some of our, uh, lateral line will actually go under. Part of the back foundation. So if we ever were to have to replace that, we will have to, we'll have to basically put in a, a separate line. Around it, which we could, it's not a big deal. But, um, Carl's been working with me going through that, and you know, if they hit something, they fix it. So. But that's where we're at. And the other thing about that construction, uh, they had a contingency in their, uh. Contract with us that they may, they may need to put a retaining wall back there. They're gonna need to put, put a retaining wall back there. So we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to at least think about that as far as budgeting for it, cause that's gonna be an additional probably ten to fifteen, maybe twenty thousand to get that retaining wall in. So, but it's the, the change in elevation, the grade and where things are, I don't think it would look right. To try to move that amount of dirt back there and try to make it a, a berm that would, it would be really hard for us to maintain back there. Yep, it's about three and a half feet back there. They had to take out. Any other questions about project updates?
It was, that's our last farmers market, we'll be tomorrow.
Oh yeah, so the, tomorrow is gonna be the, uh, final farmer's market for the season, uh, for the full farmer's market. Jerry's company is actually sponsoring food, uh, it, and we're doing a little difference so that we're trying to help the vendors. So, uh. Jerry came up with this idea of having, you know, the, the, um, food trucks here. And if you buy anything at the farmer's market, no matter the cost, you get a voucher for a free meal. And you, we've got a set menu from the food vendors for, um, you can pick whatever, uh, what, one of those set meals that are planned. And so you just take your voucher up and then you get your free meal. So, and Jerry's company's sponsoring that, so. That's on Thursday. And my girls will be there selling. Yeah, Thursday, Thursday. So Thursday, starting at four thirty. And my girls will be selling lemonade to benefit the cemetery foundation. So, and then the Goshen Cemetery Board will be there to kind of talk about the cemetery. Oh, the other project update is the wayfinding signs. I thought they would be underway now, but, uh, Abby's followed up with them. We should hear back. They're, they should be starting this, this month, so to put those in. That's the signs that are kind of like the ones you see in Fayetteville that identify where things are.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Anything else? Comments from the public?
Is there a water update? Is water now fine from Fayetteville?
So they. They have finished the Goshen portion of the, the water, but they're still on, um, Gully Road trying to finish that portion. And until that, that is fixed, they're not gonna have the service updated here, I don't think.
It's supposed to be done in September.
It was, that's correct. I think the new projected time is gonna be January.
I think it's January now, so.
Well, they finally opened it back up. It's open now, yeah. It is. Today I drove through there. No, there's no, there's no lights. They said it was gonna be one lane, but it wasn't. So I was kind of surprised. Um, any comments, I'll remember.
And whose pads on Paul Prager are gonna wash away the next big rainstorm?
The what?
Whose pads on Blue, on Paul Prager are gonna wash away the next rainfall?
Yeah, my, my semi adult children have, uh, vehemently expressed how they're just gonna completely be washed away if we should have.
It looks like a house pad and shop pad. I'm saying, I'm saying that whole area underwater.
J D, do you know what they're building there? The house? Wait.
Actually, the real flood elevation there either. There's real and then there's, you know, what FEMA says.
No, it's, it's where they're building it. It's, it's technically out of the flood zone on the map. But.
It gives water.
I, I mean. They're getting ready, they, they put the red dirt in, they're getting ready to pour it. If you drive to the south or the north entrance park, you'll see it off to the left. Uh, Colton asked about postal code update. Um, I talked to Lacey this week. She follows up with it every month. And we are in limbo. Like every month we follow up and every month we hear the same thing. There's nothing, no progress. So, but we do keep following up every month. We met with Jim Petty and then we met with.
Congressional.
Yeah.
Saying we, we, uh, focus on our attention, but right now.
But it's not off our radar. We're still, uh, trying to. And it's the safety issue that we're trying to really get. Any other comments from council and a public comment?
We had a, uh, H O A meeting just a few weeks ago. And as usual, the number one topic was, well, as it's late, since the speeding thing has been taken care of. Is, um, streets and. There's a gross vacuum of knowledge, myself being the biggest one when it comes to streets. So on the residential side, in my opinion. Uh, it's nothing but opinions, right? Who knows? Nobody in there is a civil engineer. And it seems like also in the few years I've been coming here that this conversation comes up. And every time it comes up, it's just kind of lightly gleaned over and it's kind of like, uh, we, we need to talk about that kind of issue. So what I'm wondering is. Is there anything else we can do concrete wise? Is it practical to go to the effort of maybe setting up like a task force of stakeholders to. Finally address this and talk about whether or not there's a future or a pathway. Or anything more that we could get to residents of the neighborhoods. Besides what we're giving them now, which.
I just wanna clarify, are you talking about us taking over the streets?
That would be the best case scenario. Of course, that's the best case for the residents. It's not the best case for the city, obviously. But maybe there's, you know, middle ground of, of what it would take on the city's behalf, um, if there, if there could be a middle ground, um. Even if there was nothing more than, I mean, we have no professional expertise whatsoever. We have no connections. At least that's my opinion. And in ten times we've talked about this, never. It's just a bunch of fear monitoring, right? So even if it was nothing more than the city giving us professional contacts, if you have any, or. Some unbiased party to lead us down the path of like some kind of resolution. It may end up being nothing more than. We put some special assessment and we pay for the whole damn thing ourselves. But if there's any chance in the world that this becomes a joint effort. Um, I would like to finally exhaust that, you know, so that we can say, hey, look. We've, we've tried to address this with the city and it ain't happened. Or. We're working on something with the city and we'll get back to you. But right now, it's just, you know, like, we brought this up and. City's aware and we explain, you know, a lot of revenue, no revenue coming in, but O P X for the city, so they're not just gonna. Stick their hand out, which that's, you know, reasonable. So I'm just asking if. Instead of, instead of just, you know, talking about it lightly one more time and then we do it again next month. Maybe we can.
Kind of to address that, one of the issues in the past has been that, you know, whenever people buy their H O A. They want that to essentially remain private property and only the people that live in that subdivision can go in and out of it, which has been the case. With Waterford in the past, uh, and so, you know, if you guys want to retain that as far as that is. For streets, you are right to hold, you know, whoever comes in and out of there to, you know, whoever you allow in and out. Uh, then, you know, those streets yours.
Sure.
Uh, but that kind of comes back to what the H O A wants, you know.
Obviously a little different. And, um, we are more than open to, best case for us, and I, you know, I'm. Speaking generically, but I'm pretty confident that. If we could get, uh, uh, some kind of, you know, help from the city, that this neighborhood would be, um. Would be, would be after that. Maybe not all of them.
Yeah, we wanna keep our neighborhood as ours.
So I, I would make a recommendation that if, if, if the P O A never, and you can get a, a majority vote from your P O A to turn the streets over to the city, you, you. Present a proposal for the council to adopt the streets as city streets and open the streets to the public. And if you, if you do that, then you can bring it to the council. The council can decide yes or no, whether they want to do that. And then at that point, you have an answer. I think it would require a proposal from the P O A.
The, yeah, the property owner would have to dedicate the road.
But in reality, I mean, there's no revenue coming in. What business would take on that expense? And that, uh, so I would just not wanna waste any of our time, right? I assume would have to be some kind of. Some kind of, some kind of, uh. Be some kind of revenue coming in for you guys to wanna, so I get that, so.
I think that you tip, you, you pay taxes in the city. I mean, my view on it is, is that the roads were constructed in a way that the city approved of. Then we should take them if they're being turned over to us. But that's my opinion. We have six other people here on the council that make that decision.
So we actually see it in front of us. See in front of us, there's.
And I get that. I, I hear you. I mean, if we need to follow, I've got no time. We can put that together and present it, just. I mean, being realistic with each other, we're gonna present it and you guys can stay. But we're not just taking on your streets for, no, no. That's my estimation. If that's even remotely wrong, we'll put it together anyway. We'll, we'll, we'll submit it.
What do your biops say, Dan? Two thirds, two thirds have to approve?
Uh, well, this is something, let's see, so the, the streets are HOA property, that's in the bylaws. If we wanna change any of the current bylaws, it's actually seventy-five percent. CCR is sixty, sixty percent, uh, but seventy-five percent of the, of the lot owners, I mean, I agree.
Yeah, you guys currently have an assessment from the associate, from your members to maintain the streets.
Yes, sir. But it's, I mean, you know, going the fear monitoring route, it's like we pay, we're paying, we've been increasing the last two years. I think we're paying six hundred bucks now, which is still way below neighborhoods. Uh, we started out at a unbelievably low level. And, you know, the things we're hearing from maybe, let's just say, the most knowledgeable people, which who knows what that means. We're hearing like thirty thousand, forty thousand to, to address our streets. We're also hearing these extremely gross variances in when that money's gonna be due, right? Cause I had, you know, I had Darren, Darren Riggins, the guy that developed it, told me it'd be like thirty years. We got two streets. Yeah. I mean, they're long streets, but. But we're here, you know, the, again, nobody's.
So just to give you an example, to seal Fire Tower, just to seal it and crack all, and seal all the cracks and to seal it. Uh, I think it was right at fifty thousand dollars and then to seal it and put it. I wanna say it's one point, was it point three miles or something?
We have two miles.
But we can definitely give you this contact, you know, for who does that work.
Who's that company? Tomelson?
Thank you. One took, took, completely rid of them, something like, oh, yeah.
In Waterford, only millions.
Yeah, yes.
Two fifty a mile sticks in there.
Five, you have five miles, it was millions. We have two miles.
It was two hundred and fifty thousand to redo it all.
But it is, it, it's definitely, it is a lot to maintain streets. It, it costs a lot of money. No matter what you do.
Sure.
You know, and I, I, I I can tell you the streets that are the bane of my existence in the city, it's Fire Tower, because all those trucks come up, up and down this road hauling all the feed to the top of the mountain. We've got fifteen, eighteen chicken houses up there, you know, how many tons a day go through there? Ocean Tuttle because of the quarry, uh, that's the cut through to seventy-four. So you've got dump truck after dump, truck after dump, truck going down Ocean Tuttle because that's the cut through. And now we're gonna have Blue Springs, which is also gonna be a big, you know, problem for us if they have all these homes built, because it's gonna be the same thing. You got loads and loads and loads and loads of red dirt and.
I think our access are gonna increase on the leasings. You know, blue springs are important. And heaven forbid we get snow.
But we do know that that is a significant cost.
Yeah, we only have fifty-six lots and available lots, so, um, two miles, fifty-six people. But we'll bring the, I'll bring the, um, the backboard.
We barely got two thirds of vote for it. It's all a dead crack. Good luck on bridges.
Oh yeah, do, do, do you guys want me to work on that for Goshen or just let it be? Alright, anything else before we, uh, maybe adjourn? Alright, all in favor? You guys get some food?